Okay, for the record, this is the Town of Fairfield special joint meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission and Affordable Housing Committee. On Tuesday, October 19th, 2021, we're meeting virtually via Zoom. We have with us Emily and Harrigan and Mark Barnhart as staff members, Glenn Chauder from Planometrics. We also have various members of both Planning and Zoning Commission and the Affordable Housing Committee. And perhaps I can ask Steve Grathwell, the chairman of the Affordable Housing Committee, just to say a few words of welcome and introduce other members of the committee that are in attendance this evening. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mark. So first of all, welcome to everybody, and I'm very happy that we could have this joint meeting. It was about six, maybe seven years ago, Glenn, when we did the update to the Affordable Housing Plan and Fairfield, even before that, was on the forefront of taking actions to meet their affordable housing needs. Since then, since the update, I think we've made tremendous progress. And this update to the Affordable Housing Plan is going to ratchet up to another level. With us tonight from the Affordable Housing Committee, Carrie McOver, Cindy Samarko, Heather Rosky. And I think that's it for tonight. But once again, thank you, and I'm very eager to see what prevails tonight. Thank you.
Mark, could I prevail upon you, Mark Corcoran, prevail upon you to introduce the other members of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Sure.
In this meeting?
Well, I'll start off. I'm Mark Corcoran. I've been on the commission about eight years now. We've also got Steve Levy, who's been on the commission about four years. Meg Francis, maybe six years. Is that right, Meg?
Yeah, probably six or eight. Yeah.
And Kathy Braun is a newer member. And I'm looking, Peter Elliott is one of our alternates. I think that's everybody.
Okay. Well, in the interest of time, I appreciate everyone being here, and I'll turn things over to Glenn Chauder. He has a presentation that hopefully queue up our conversation discussion for later this evening. So Glenn, why don't you go ahead? I think I did give you, well, apparently I did give you screen sharing.
Try to anticipate your every wish, Mark, so.
There you go.
Good evening, everybody. Those on the Affordable Housing Committee know me, but the members of Planning and Zoning Commission perhaps haven't met me before. I'm with Planometrics, a planning consulting firm. We do work basically for municipalities. I had the pleasure of working with Fairfield with the Affordable Housing Committee on the 2014 Affordable Housing Plan. So I was quite excited when got called back to work with them on this effort. Because planning and zoning is involved in many of the issues related to development and housing, we felt a joint meeting was important to have a dialogue about different issues and elements that we've been talking about. And to actually facilitate that, I put together a PowerPoint that I'd like to go through with you and set it up for discussion. I think if there are major things you'd like to chat about, go ahead and interrupt. Otherwise, we've certainly got a lot of time at the end of the meeting for a discussion overall. First of all, I want to get started on terminology, just so that we're all on the same page, as we use words and phrases here tonight. We'll be talking in the presentation about housing choices and options. And by that, what we mean is different types of housing to meet people's needs and desires throughout their entire lives. That can be housing for younger people, older people, empty nesters, families, people who want larger, smaller housing units. And of course, it also addresses the issue about more affordable and less affordable and what people's, again, interests and desires are. And the little picture down in the bottom right corner is a little bit of a joke that, you know, Baskin Robbins has 31 flavors of ice cream. I'm not sure there really are 31 flavors of housing, but having housing and having choices and options can benefit Fairfield today and in the future and continue to meet people's needs. Other terminology is this, is this phrase affordable housing. And unfortunately, there's probably at least four different ways that this, those two words can be considered. The first of which is that housing is considered to be affordable when people spend less than 30% of their income on it. So if you spend more than that, you're considered to be housing cost burden. And if you spend less than that, you're considered to be able to afford your housing. And then we have sort of the public policy concept of affordable housing, and you can see it in quotations there. This is housing that's affordable to people or families earning 80% or less of area median income. And so, for example, if people spend, who earn a million dollars, decide to spend $300,000 on housing, well, good for them. They still have $700,000 to do other things in their lives. However, when we're talking about people and families earning 80% or less of area median income, depend, the cost of housing can present significant challenges for them in terms of other cost of living. And so, public policy is generally concerned most with housing affordable to people at 80% of area median income, otherwise known as AMI. And then we have, in the yellow box, housing that is deed restricted to be affordable to people or families. So this is housing which sell or resell always within that price band, so that there wouldn't be significant appreciation or things that might make the housing unaffordable. And then our last category is housing, affordable housing, which is in accordance with CGS 830G, which is, again, state-recognized deed-restricted, but it's essentially imposed on a community. I'm not sure if it's going to be relevant to our conversation here tonight and do too much detail. But based on the most recent information, if we're talking about two or three bedroom units, we're talking about rents somewhere between $1,350 for a two-bedroom unit or $2,000 for a three-bedroom unit at 60 or 80% of area median income. And in terms of sale prices, we're talking somewhere between $250 and $300,000 for a two- or three-bedroom unit at 80% of area median income, and somewhere between $165,000 and $195,000 at 60% of area median income for a two- or three-bedroom unit. So that's, that's what we mean when we talk about housing affordable to people at different income levels. And finally, the question is, what does the state count for affordable housing in Fairfield? The state recognizes 556 units in Fairfield. That's about 2.5% of the 2020 census count or the preliminary 2020 census count. And it falls into four different boxes. The boxes are assisted housing, this includes things like the Housing Authority, rental assistance units, which are housing choice vouchers granted to people of lower moderate income, 70 units of CHFA mortgage financed housing for low and moderate income families, and then 124 deed-restricted units. This is housing which has been built and deed-restricted. I think that Fairfield has been moving, making progress in this direction, and so we'll talk a little bit later about the number of units.
Glenn, I just wanted to recognize that Chairman Matt Wagner has also joined the meeting tonight. So thank, welcome, Matt.
Good evening, Matt. How are you? So just a little bit of background in terms of where we're at and what the Affordable Housing Committee has been working on. Throughout history, shelter and housing have been important issues for people. It's a fundamental, basic human need in terms of having shelter and housing to meet those needs. In 1988, the Town of Fairfield recognized growing housing affordability issues, created an affordable housing plan, as Steve Grathwell indicated earlier. This plan was among the first of its kind in Connecticut, and this plan demonstrated Fairfield's leadership in looking at this issue here overall. In 2014, this plan was revisited to reflect the issues and concerns at that time. And now here we are, seven years later in 2021, time to update that plan. And there's really two reasons for that. Number one is the state is required that every municipality have a, in Connecticut, have an affordable housing plan that is no more than five years old. And this plan has to be adopted for all 169 municipalities by June of 2022. So that is one reason why we undertook this effort. But the other reason, too, is that housing affordability issues in Fairfield continue to grow, and it continues to be an issue of public policy concern. If we look at the ratio between housing sale prices and median income, so this is a chart showing the ratio or fluctuation of housing price versus median, median housing price versus median income. We can see that over time, it's fluctuated, and here we are now that we're at a ratio of approximately 4.4 in terms of median value and median income. And for many years, housing was considered to be affordable for our parents and people like them, because housing was down in the 2.5 to 3 ratio. So the compared to average incomes and average house was falling generally within that ballpark. But what's interesting is that the Baby Boomers, one of the largest generations in America, started to come of house-buying age. It started to put stress on the housing market. The ratio started to increase. Here in 1988, it was recognized again that housing affordability was an issue, and Fairfield undertook its first Affordable Housing Plan. It continued. We went through the housing bubble that then burst in 2006 or so. The ratio fell back down, but now it started to increase again. And actually, what we're also seeing is that because of the COVID bump, I'm not sure that anybody really sort of saw this coming, but since 2019, housing prices have risen another 25%. So the housing affordability issues and ratio have continued to grow, and the concern has continued to increase. And over this time period, really, over the last 10 years or so, Fairfield has added a number of housing units of different types in the community. When we look at the housing production between 2001 and 2010, and then 2011 to 2020, what we see is the ratio of housing units that have been built has gone from 85% single-family to 50%. And that the percentage of five-plus units has gone from 8% to 42%. So we're adding housing of different types and flavors in the community. And then, as we look at the number of units that have been built over time, again, shading indicates the units which have been built of different types and flavors. So we have made progress in terms of some types of housing production, and hopefully to meet housing needs in the community. So I think in terms of background, the Affordable Housing Committee recognized we're getting more housing and more types of housing. But the conversations that we've been having about is whether or not this housing is actually strengthening Fairfield and whether there might be other options for Fairfield to consider in terms of promoting and guiding different types of housing choices and options to support overall community structure, enhance Fairfield's sense of place, and also promote walkable and mixed-use nodes. The Affordable Housing Committee feels as part of our work that it may be time for Fairfield's housing approach to move ahead with proactive steps to address the need for more housing, which is more affordable. The need for what's called middle housing between single-family and multifamily to help address the changing housing needs of an aging population, and also to provide additional guidance to the location and design of certain types of housing that could help Fairfield strengthen its overall sense of place and to help meet housing needs. As you may be aware, the Affordable Housing Committee undertook a survey of the community. Because of COVID, we went with an online survey, which was open in June and July of this year. Overall, we had close to 1,200 people participate in the online survey. They represented all ages, but the predominant categories for the participants were people ages 25 to 54, 61% had lived there for 20 years or more. It came from all parts of Fairfield, generally property owners, more female participation than male participation, and white, Caucasian, generally one-to-two-person households, 200,000-plus annual incomes, generally people who are not cost burdened. So this actually reflects sort of the cross-section of Fairfield, you know, some of its demographic characteristics. But it doesn't reflect all of the people in Fairfield and some of the housing needs that exist in the community. When we asked people about their sense of which housing needs were most important, people felt that housing choices were important. And we get that conclusion by adding together the columns for very important and important here overall. So as you can see, 90% of people think the housing option for older persons and households was important to them. Same thing for younger people and younger families, and housing options for disabled persons. Support was still strong for lower-income service workers and lower-income people and families, but not to the same level. So in fact, this is part of where the challenge is, is that these people could be older, they could be younger, and they could be disabled. But as soon as we put the moniker "lower-income people and households", support seems to dwindle. And I think that that's part of the challenge that the Affordable Housing Committee faces, Planning and Zoning Commission may face, is people's concerns about these kinds of issues. We asked a question about whether or not people felt there might be locational reasons or rationale for different housing locations and whether they would support that. 64% of respondents felt that having affordable housing along main travel quarters might be policy or program that they would strongly or somewhat agree with. 60% felt the same way, somewhat strongly agree about transit-oriented locations. And 56% supported the concept of water and sewer availability. Some of the numbers in terms of somewhat strongly disagree may simply because people just don't like the concept of affordable housing overall. We asked the question about the design of multifamily housing, and where people felt Fairfield should continue efforts to guide the design of multi-housing in Fairfield. The result was not as high as I thought it might be, but still 54% thought that that was an important direction for Fairfield to go in the future. So the Affordable Housing Committee has been working on strategies, and we wanted to share these with you to get your thoughts and feedback going forward. A preliminary goal that we've been working with is to provide for a variety of housing options in Fairfield in order to address affordable housing needs, expand housing options and choices generally, and help meet housing needs of households of all ages, sizes, incomes, and characteristics. And to also try to be proactive in guiding rather than react in terms of trying to show locations, designs, and configurations that people in Fairfield would accept and hopefully embrace. So the state legislation for the creation of an Affordable Housing Plan has several operative words. It's, the goal is to increase the number of affordable housing developments in the community. So our strategies have revolved around continuing efforts to increase the number of assisted housing units in Fairfield. These units are generally proposed, operated, and managed by the Housing Authority and other people. Assisted housing is housing which receives financial assistance, mortgage, or other financing from a state or federal agency, and is deed-restricted. And this housing counts to the Affordable Housing Appeals list. The next strategy is seek to increase the number of deed-restricted housing units. We can increase the number of deed-restricted units through newly-built units. In some situations, these have been imposed through 830G. The commission has adopted some inclusionary zoning requirements, that affordable units, deed-restricted units are required in some zoning districts. And one of our strategies that is for discussion is the possibility of increasing the inclusionary or incentivized deed-restricted provisions in more zones, as to whether or not that might be a direction for the future. And also possibly to explore ways to convert existing units to deed-restricted units in some way, shape, or form. And lastly, to attract households with rental and mortgage assistance. These units count to our Affordable Housing Appeals list numbers. The town already has some program to mortgage assistance and can continue those efforts in the future. The plan is likely to recommend two enhancing existing approaches. In the last plan, we recommended the establishment of the Housing Trust Fund. That was established. It has been funded through zoning permit fees. I think more money has been raised than we anticipated, mostly because of some of the development efforts which have occurred in Fairfield overall. But those funds are now allowing the Affordable Housing Committee and the municipality to do more in the area of creating affordable housing units. Recommending to continue to enhance procedures, make, prepare, maintain standard documents for affordable deed-restricted units in the future, and also look at ways to expand and improve affordability metrics. We've been having conversations about the possibility of extending the affordability period for more than 40 years, so that the units don't disappear and have to be replaced again in the future. To look at possible opportunities to capture windfall on the expiration of restrictions. Those units are for-sale units. Somebody makes a windfall when the affordability restrictions come off, and why couldn't or shouldn't that be the town, so that those funds could be put back into affordable housing? And the basic direction again is to keep affordable housing, and it's affordable for a longer period, and capture the windfall overall. There is perhaps an opportunity for Fairfield in the near future to obtain a four-year moratorium from the Affordable Housing Appeals procedure, based on the records kept by Mark, where accumulated approximately 377 out of the 440 housing unit equivalent points that are needed for a moratorium, and with units which are currently in production. Additional housing equivalent points will come online, and then there will be additional points, we believe, in units already approved after that. So there may be a supplemental four-year moratorium for that, and that is something that Fairfield should consider in the future overall. And then, in addition to the affordable housing units, the Affordable Housing Committee is also thinking about diversifying housing choices and options in the community, indicated earlier, to strengthen the overall community organization and structure, enhance sense of place, and to reinforce walkable, mixed-use nodes in Fairfield. And there is this conversation these days that historically, housing development is focused on much single-family. I think more than 80% of Fairfield's housing stock is single-family homes overall. And there have also been larger-scale multifamily developments that have been built. But a concept which has been discussed in recent years is this concept of middle housing, and it's called missing middle housing in the sense that in some situations, zoning regulations don't allow for possible alternative housing types that could meet housing needs effectively somewhere between single-family and larger multifamily. And so some of these choices include two-family, three-family, or four-family buildings, smaller apartment buildings, or streetfront townhouses, cottage court-type development, or even mixed-use buildings in certain areas. And these could be incentivized to provide for affordable housing units overall. As part of our work, we also went back and reviewed prior plans of development, and in the 1979 POCD, there was some discussion of centers in Fairfield, part of what they call town centers. Tungus Hill and the center, area centers in different areas, and then neighborhood centers. And our thought was that perhaps these areas could provide opportunities for housing at slightly higher densities to blend in with the development that is already in these recognized centers to perhaps create some additional housing opportunities that would fit into the overall character and flavor of Fairfield overall. So we worked with the MetroCog and their DIS people to look at areas that might have factors related to supporting affordable housing or housing diversity overall. Most factors included public water service areas, sewer service areas, radii from town center, the area centers in the POCD, the neighborhood centers, the train stations, bus routes, arterial and collector roads. And this was the map that resulted based on the variables that were selected. Not meant to be a definitive map. It's really meant to sort of explain or visualize a concept in terms of guiding development in ways that could strengthen or enhance the overall character and structure of Fairfield, promote sense of place with housing in and near walkable mixed-use nodes. In addition, the Affordable Housing Committee has had some discussion about design guidelines, and that many people's concerns related to affordable housing have to deal with the design of the housing, and that perhaps we could provide guidance in terms of how housing can or should be configured in different approaches. This is an example of some design guidelines used by the Town of Simsbury. And they've identified favorable design treatments for duplex and townhouses and unfavorable design treatments, and they've listed some features here. And this approach has been used to guide some developments which have occurred and to promote better design overall, and that's something that might be appropriate for Fairfield as well in terms of enhancing an overall sense of place, because the unit design and characteristics fit in with Fairfield's overall character. So I think the recommendation for discussion is about a new approach, enabling different housing types and choices that may be appropriate, a geographic type of approach in areas where housing or housing density might be more appropriate. This could be recommended in the plan of conservation or established by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Could be approvable by special permit or some other permitting approach. And there could be location and design guidelines, which are very influential in terms of what happens and where. Also, in some discussion about the concept of a community housing trust, also known as a community trust, which is a private nonprofit organization which acquires land and housing to hold it in trust. It complements the work already being done in Fairfield, but it's a private nonprofit entity, not a government group or housing authority, not unlike a land trust. But their goal again is to promote housing. They receive grants, donations, and use the money to acquire land and housing, and continue to work alongside others in the community. So that's the presentation in terms of the current work of the Affordable Housing Committee. We're interested in having a dialogue with the Planning and Zoning Commission so that we can work effectively together in terms of how to address issues of common concern in the future. So with that, I'll, I'll stop sharing, and yes, Mark, turn it back to you.
Thanks, Glenn. I think what we're hoping for is, maybe, and I'm not sure how to best referee this, because you know, it would have been better to meet in person, but unfortunately, we're still limited in that regard. So I don't know if I can maybe defer first or call first on the respective chairman of each committee and then our commission, and then we go from there, and I, so I'm open to any suggestion you may have. Matt, I know you were late in joining us. Welcome. I didn't know if you wanted to say a few words of welcome yourself, and then we can go into our discussion.
Sure. Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Glenn, for that really powerful presentation, chock full of really great information. You know, welcome, everyone. I apologize for being a few minutes late. You know, I, to your point, Mark, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure what the best way to go about it is. You know, I, to your point, Mark, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure what the best way to go about it is. The, Glenn, you posed the questions, you know, at the end there about, you know. Suggestions, recommendations for, for moving forward. And I, you know, do we, do we just throw open, an open mic? You know, we, we have been over the years trying to work on those different initiatives that you identified in your. In your program, right? The, the, the trust fund being one of them, amending the. The A D U's, the regulations enabling A D U's. Also trying to facilitate. Mixed use, as you mentioned, trademark buildings down around Commerce Drive. In the metro center and in other places. And, you know, trying to, trying to get ahead. I think the, you know, there's two things that we need to talk about, one is just affordable housing. Generally, but the, and the other is eight thirty G, which you touched on at the end in terms of the moratorium and so forth. You know, eight thirty G is. It, it's, it's, it's a, it's a mirage. Because we'll never get to ten percent. The statute talks about developments of thirty percent affordable. So you build a, a unit with a hundred, you know, units and thirty of them are affordable, you've increased the denominator. Sufficiently that any units that you add to the numerator, you know. Make your percentage of affordable go down, right? Not up. Now we have the authority that comes in like pine tree and so forth that creates, you know. Exclusively affordable units, and so that, that's great. But it's a, it's, it's a, it's kind of a catch twenty-two. I think the important thing is to serve the community. Right? And to, to have a good mix and, and opportunities for those that need and, and want them. You know, I, I've always had a fundamental problem with the forty-year designation. I, I don't understand that, I find it completely arbitrary. And it enables the development of. Buildings that are not in, 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 you know, compliance with the regulations or keeping with the, you know, the, the. The, the town's desired development. And, and yet in forty years, those restrictions go away and we're all left with apartment buildings and, you know, dense. Dense development that doesn't fit within the. You know, the, the, the division of, of, you know, the town and the residents and, you know, the, the, the plans that were laid. So that's a, you know, for another day because we're not going to do anything meaningful about that tonight. But I think that also counsels however in favor of being more proactive to your point. Because if we can generate the kinds of opportunities. That are designed to be incented through eight thirty G. Then, you know, we can serve our community in a more productive way without being subject to what I'll call predatory development. Where, you know, folks taking advantage of the, the statute to do things, you know, that we, we don't want. And in the end, perhaps that's exactly what the legislature intended, right? Was to provide us with the incentive to do that which perhaps we wouldn't do on our own. Because if not, there is this other, you know, alternative lurking. So, you know, those are off the cuff, you know, some of my, my thoughts and reactions. I think that we have been making great strides in raw numbers. Not necessarily that percentage of affordable, you know, housing. And I think that, you know, when the opportunity presents itself. Mark does a great job of coming into our commission and summarizing the strides that we've made and, and. You know, and I, I'm certainly proud of, of, you know, the different. Things that we've accomplished. I saw somebody had a question in the chat, I think it was Alexis. How much money is left is, 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 has been accumulated in the, the trust fund? And how much is left? Because I know that we just bought some property, I don't know whether we've closed and, and that's been. Been paid yet, but maybe Mark, you can just give us a, a highlight on, on that. How much did we collect? Did we bought, purchase property? Did we spend it? What's this?
I'll just go from, from memory, which is somewhat, sometimes it's problematic. But I, I think I have a fairly decent handle on at least the raw numbers here. But in the, in the time period since we've created the Housing Trust and the inclusionary zoning fee. We've raised roughly one and a half million dollars, which I think is, is roughly over a three-year span. Since the inception of that program. And as, as the, both the Planning and Zoning Commission and Committee know. We have been attempting to redevelop the former Navy housing site in Parkview Commons. By repurchasing some of the lots, aggregating them and making them available for eventual redevelopment. With higher density, probably to address Glenn's. This discussion point in terms of the missing middle or to create duplex or triplex units in lieu of the single-family homes that are there. So there is that opportunity, but through that, we've, we've purchased four lots to date. Roughly one point two and the Affordable Housing Committee. Has also just recently, and that has not yet come before your board, Mr. Chairman. For an eight twenty-four review, but we're looking at the acquisition of a property on Greenfield Street. That provides a similar opportunity to create a duplex or multiple duplex building lots. So to make a long story short, we do have authorization from the boards to borrow against. The Housing Trust Fund, money is to be generated by it, but we have not yet tapped into that. And so we've just expended out of the, the fund itself.
Yeah, yeah, that's interesting. And do we know in terms of the A D U's? Since we passed those revised regulations, have we seen any increase in, you know. Applications for new A D U's or, I mean, it's been, it hasn't been that long, right? But just curious.
I, I will defer to Emeline, but I don't think we've seen a, a, a number. There has been some activity, right, Emeline?
We've seen applications for three detached A D U's. Since we passed the regulation and I haven't, I haven't particularly noticed. Any kind of significant uptick in the. Pre-existing allowance for attached A D U's. But, you know, we haven't, I don't know that we've meticulously reviewed our last. Three years of permit issuance, but it hasn't been my understanding that there's been a, you know. A landslide of these, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, the one issue that you did raise, Mr. Chairman, regarding the forty-year restriction is actually something that the committee has discussed. Which is are there ways in which we could. More, have a more lasting impact in terms of these affordable units, or at least not provide some. Level of a, a financial windfall to the person who happens to be holding the title. At the expiration of the deed restricted period, so. There has been some conversation, we're not, we're not there yet in terms of what that might entail, but. Certainly we recognize that that's an issue, you know, not, not in the short term, short term, but we don't want to end up just treading water here. We do want to make permanent lasting changes for the better here.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I, I couldn't agree more. And cer- certainly anything that we do affirmatively should not be so restricted. And, and should be, you know, in perpetuity and lasting. Yeah, no doubt. So, you know, and, and we could, we could sort of go on about sort of Commerce Drive, Metro Center. And we've tried to incent further development, you know, in certain areas. Some of which has gained a little traction, like you mentioned trademark, some, some which hasn't. We had an entire. Facility or development, you know, at Metro Center that, that was approved, right? For residential units with the commercial component of a hotel and then COVID hit. And as I remember, there were certain affordable units that were designated in, in that. Development. You know, so. I, I would, so those really, response, those are, those really are my comments and sort of general overview reaction to the presentation. I mean, perhaps we can throw it open to, you know, in, in, in the sort of style of a, a regular meeting. I'm sure that there are certain commissioners and members of the Affordable Housing Committee that, you know, have thoughts and want to be. Heard here.
I think Kathy indicated that she has a question. Go ahead Kathy.
I have a couple of questions. What, what is the median, a couple of statistics relate? What the median income of our area from which you calculate the A M I, which is eighty percent. No, the A M I is average median income. Affordable housing is supposed to be thirty percent of eighty percent of that, right?
Yeah, so technically you're supposed to look at the lesser of the statewide or the area median income. And just round numbers, they're both relatively similar to one another, it's about a hundred thousand dollars. In round numbers, so the area median income for this area is one hundred thousand, six hundred dollars as far as twenty twenty-one. So you take, let's say a hundred thousand dollars, take eighty percent of that, eighty thousand dollars for a family of four. You would then make adjustments both upwards and downwards from that for different household size. And then take thirty percent of that, that's more or less how it works.
Thank you. And then as far as. The absolute number of affordable housing units that are counted for eight dash thirty G is five hundred fifty-six right now. What is the, and, and the percentage is around two point five percent of the twenty twenty census for total housing stock. What was the total, because I, I don't have that.
Two, two point five seven. Two point five seven was the twenty ten, the percentage as it relates to twenty ten, but. Yeah, it's, we have about twenty-two thousand and cha- almost twenty-three thousand housing units in town, so. You know, ten percent to, to Chairman Wagner's point, ten percent is a bit, pretty big number in, in a community the size of Fairfield. So.
It's a big number in any community because it, I mean, that's, it just represents ten percent of the stock, it's right? And so when you think about that, what you just identified, that we've gone down from two point five seven to two point five three percent. From comparative figures today, twenty ten versus twenty twenty. And the work that we've done over that period of time and the opportunities that we've created and the units that we've created and so forth. The density that we see in various places downtown and, and elsewhere. You know, it's, it, I think it's quite remarkable, right? Because we've grown as a town as well. And, and we still have this issue.
It's remarkable and it also, everything we do that satisfies all these goals brings us to possibly a lower. Percentage of total housing stock and that gets cited. At public hearings, it gets picked up in the record, appeals, I've seen judges quote it.
Yep.
A judge on a wetlands case quoted, you could tell the judge wanted to reverse the wetlands denial. But the judge couldn't because of it's not governed by eight dash thirty G for wetlands. But there's, doesn't seem to be any explanation given in the record or to the court. That you could be doing tons of work to add to housing stock just the way everybody wants and your racial will go down. And that brings me to some really my question, I guess, that was my comment. So all these things that are out of our control, the, the four types of affordable housing, the deed restricted is the eight dash thirty G. The government-run housing authority ones. Those are within our control more or less, but the eight, I call them section eight vouchers, housing vouchers. For rental units and the chat for mortgage, you know, federal-backed mortgage, that is completely out of our control. And I, and all, as, as is extending the life of the forty-year deed restrictions beyond what the law requires. How do we expand those? When is, how do we expand those to, to make it more?
Glenn, I don't have an answer for you yet, but Glenn, do you have any thoughts on any of what Kathy asked about how to do that? You're on mute, by the way.
Yeah, I just figured that out, I got a little mud on my screen, I apologize. I think it goes back to what Chairman Wagner had to say, I think it's really, really hard to drive by the numbers and focus in on the percentage. For Fairfield, the community was about twenty thousand housing units. So you start thinking about, yes, we could add a development that would have, let's say fifteen housing units in it. And Chairman Wagner's corrected, it's not going to move the needle much. So really perhaps the issue for us can or should be to how do we meet the needs of the community? In terms of providing for housing needs and desires in appropriate places. Hopefully affordability restrictions in play that we can strengthen our community rather than just focus on a number. Because I, I don't know that we're ever going to be able to make or meet or call success at some point in time. Simply by that dashboard. It's unfortunate and kind of ironic that our percentage went down. As the chairman indicated, all the work that we've done over the last certainly seven years since I became involved with Fairfield and. Affordable Housing Committee, so that is a challenge for us. I think there are some areas that we can make meaningful progress, I do think assisted housing, working with the housing authority to find sites. Gets us a hundred percent affordable units on a site. And hopefully with a careful design that fits into the character of the neighborhood, maybe this is again the location and design guidelines that. We could work on, so we're not necessarily surprised when a housing development comes along. That could be a way to meet needs. I think that type of housing. Addresses people at fifty percent A M I and below. And that's really a very deep dive or ask if you will for addressing housing needs. And perhaps we could look at eight thirty G or, or a set aside required or mandated across the board. For multifamily and other types of developments, or even in maybe some of the missing middle housing, smaller. Two, three, four family units or, or buildings or things like that with an affordable unit in them to. Meet housing needs and also one of those needs is, is affordable. Could be other strategies for us to consider, I think small incremental steps.
I see a, a commission member Levy has a question and I'll just make a note, if, if you do want to be recognized. Feel free to either raise your hand, put something in the chat like Kathy did, Steve, go ahead.
Thank you. After four years on the commission and a lot of thought about affordable housing. I've really come to a couple of conclusions, number one, I don't think we can rely on private developers. To really foster the diversity and the type of affordable housing that this community needs. The problem with eight thirty G is that we, between the profit motive. And the, the ability to go outside the zoning regulations, you see maximum development. And you see a lot of, you know, studios, single and a few two-bedroom apartments. But you don't see anything that addresses the, or provides affordable housing to families. So I think there. We really have to look similar to the Quincy Street or the Naval Area redevelopment. Where a lot of it's going to have to come from the town. Where, because land is too expensive and valuable for a private developer to put in something like. A lower density cluster housing or co-housing, which I know I've seen in the very senior citizen proposals that. There's one up in Bethel, but something where you've got a lesser density but shared common areas. Shared recreational areas and, you know, cluster housing model. Which also would be attractive for, you know, all income groups. I don't think you want a development that's a hundred percent affordable, you want. There are a variety of income, you need diversity. I know in Norwalk, there's some urban apartments where they have senior housing along with a daycare center. What a wonderful combination, you have seniors working with, you know, infants and young families. Similarly, co-housing up in Bethel spans all age groups. So what it really boils us down to is that we can't just rely on the developers, we do, for instance, with the fund. We have to explore the opportunities and, well, I hate to say it might require some condemnation or something of that nature. But the ability for the town to be proactive and develop a less dense affordable housing. So that's one point, the other is, you know, I think we need to focus on what is the reason for affordable housing. If I had my say or brothers, I would never be at a meeting with, about affordable housing where the word numerator, denominator was used. It's just, you know, the purpose is not to obtain. It's just, you know, the purpose is not to obtain a moratorium. I could care less about the, you know, what percentage of this or that. The purpose is to promote affordable housing and diversity. I think one of the most vibrant communities, uh, in our town is McKinley School District, which is perhaps, uh, the most diverse. Uh, and similarly, you've got the Grassmere area where you also have diversity. And that is good for the community. It's good for the people that live there. Uh, but I don't think that's going to come just from the private developers. I mean, I think our focus should be on affordable housing that's affordable for singles, elders, young couples and families. And that may require some governmental, you know, uh, development. Um, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Steve, did you have something that you wanted to add? Steve Graffol?
Um, sure. Um, first of all, I think that Steve just made some great points. And I agree with almost all of them. Um, and I'm, and Matt also uh, made some great points. Um, just a couple of things. One is when we did the Affordable Housing Plan update the last time, it was entitled diversifying Fairfield's housing portfolio. That's one of the things the town needs. We need more options. The the subtitle of that plan was taking control of our future, which we really, really want to do. Um, I think uh, Matt, you were down at the very start where I said that Fairfield is in the forefront in the entire state of taking action. And most of that credit I'll give to TPZ. You know, you guys have done some remarkable things, the inclusionary zoning, the inclusionary zoning fee, the ADUs. Um, you know, you've, you've really worked hard uh, to help the town, to help us, um, provide a uh, an atmosphere where we can get more affordable housing. The town has a need that's independent of the state requirements, but there are state requirements that we have to deal with. Um, I don't like talking about moratoriums, but we've got to be realistic. We should do the best we can, but keep that in mind. And, um, if we get the moratorium, then we have more control for four years over our future. And just a couple of things what towards what Steve was saying, um, not for profits of course can help, but that takes a much more active role on the part of the Affordable Housing Committee and the town reaching out to work with the not for profits. And the housing authority, um, could be more active, um, in different ways. They've been active recently. Uh, and just one last thing, I'm, I have a friend who teaches, uh, law, um, at at law school, teaches urban and real estate law. And I asked him if we could mandate more than forty years, if we could mandate perpetuity deeds uh, for eight thirty G. And he said he didn't see why we couldn't. The law says it has to be at least forty years. So the town, if it wanted to, could make it fifty or sixty or eighty. So, uh, I'd like to have a fuller discussion on that.
That's great. Now the next one that comes through, that's it.
Well, yeah, let me just slow everybody down there for a second. I I want you to know that, uh, Aryan, for example, has adopted a regulation that says, um, life of the unit or forty years, whichever is longer. So I think you either have to do this through a regulation or through a policy adopted by the commission to make that happen. I wouldn't. I I would encourage the commission not to go and impose that as a condition without pre-warning upfront. That would be my.
I will say that currently our regulations, at least with regard to the TOD zone, provides for the life of the development are not less than forty years.
Yeah, okay. Now, um, the issue, uh, I I I think I understand your point, Glenn. That you you'd hate for a, uh, an applicant developer to be confronted with a condition of approval, uh, changing the Affordable Housing Plan from deed restricted for forty for forty years to in perpetuity and then claim that somehow that was in a discriminatory uh, act, uh, right against the the developer. But, um, and eh, having a regulation that says that, um, you know, is not meaningful vis a vis a an eight thirty G applicant. Right? Because they don't, they can put anything they want in their, in their affordable housing plan.
I think.
Pretty, a minimum forty, minimum forty.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, uh, some communities I've been working with, I've coached them to adopt a policy related to or a model or a standard housing affordability plan. So for example, Ridgefield, if you go on their, the website, they actually have a standard housing affordability plan and a list of approved third party administrators. And they require that all applicants use their plan unless you want to take exception to something, you have to talk about it. Why you're taking exception to something. And then the second thing is that you can't have your secretary or somebody else be the administrator. It's got to be somebody who's experienced and capable of doing this. And I think the purpose of this is to make sure that, um, these units stay affordable for the intended period. Um, and subject to, uh, reasonable conditions. I I I've got involved in a situation in another community where does it doesn't appear that anybody actually read the housing affordability plan that was approved by the commission? In units which originally were supposed to sell at two hundred thousand dollars and now at four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, no, it's that that those, those are all, uh, very fair points. Um, you know, we've checked in, I have anyway, from time to time, uh, with Mark about, um, you know, the developers, uh, reporting their advertising, um, efforts and their vacancy rates and their applicant rates and so forth. Um, and, uh, Mark, I think you follow up with them. That's something you you try to track, right?
Yes, uh, we do get an annual compliance report from each of the, uh, each of the developments that have deed restricted units in them.
Right, right. So, so there's that. I mean, I do like the idea of requiring, you know, or adopting a, um, you know, a plan, which is, um, in in.
Did I freeze or Matt freeze?
I think Matt froze.
I think Matt froze, yeah.
I think Matt froze.
Okay.
Sounded like a really good idea, too.
Uh, we'll, we'll come back to that in a second. Um, I did want to, there was a there was one question posed in the chat, uh, if if I can respond to that, uh, you know, I think Kate Meyer, they asked a question about uh, Greenwich and, uh, which is a little larger community than than Fairfield. The fact that they have more affordable housing. And and part of that, I think, if you look at the numbers more carefully, again, I don't want to dwell on the numbers, but, uh, but certainly if you look at the Affordable Housing Appeals List and the composition of those affordable units, in many, uh, communities, assisted units make up a larger percentage to Commissioner Levy's point. Um, you know, working with nonprofits or housing authorities to develop affordable units that are government assisted. Uh, they make up a larger percentage of the affordable units in that community, which drives up their overall numbers. So I think that is a weak point here. We only have uh, a certain, you know, smaller percentage of those units that are government assisted. The Fairfield Housing Authority is a relatively small housing authority. Uh, it did redevelop Pine Tree, um, and added the number of units there, but that's only fifty units at that location. And they manage another thirty eight at at Trefoil. So, you know, there is opportunity there, and I think, uh, to the point made by several speakers. Uh, when you're working with those groups, uh, they're frequently providing for more uh, a higher percentage of affordable units to begin with. Um, more deeply targeted units to, uh, assist those at lower income brackets. And they're restricted, uh, not just for a forty year term, but typically in perpetuity. So there is a benefit to working with groups like the Housing Authority and others to further our goals. Meg, did you have something? I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, no, I just said, uh,
And Chairman Wagner's back.
Matt's was, uh, leading to in perpetuity instead of just the forty years. Um, which is a good idea. Um, and my comment is I think the most severe need I hear is for young well, singles particularly, but I suppose young families too. Starter homes and seniors wanting something to buy rather than rent on one floor. Lot of demand for that. And, eh, you know, it's all wonderful, but where's the land? It it seems the minute there's any land, a developer or an entity has already bought it. I I don't know who keeps track every vacant space off Mill Hill Terrace and what little is left. And it's gone instantly.
Yeah. I found that very. Just begging to be developed.
Yeah.
Yeah, Emily.
Uh, so I wanted to kind of get back to some of the, you know, as we're kind of looking at our plan of conservation and development. Um, I did want to kind of get back to some of the questions I think that Glenn had posed by his presentation and then offer, um, you know, some questions, I think, to, in particular, to the plan and zoning commissioners. Um, you know, I think that we do have to kind of be a little bit more purposeful in terms of some of the things that we heard when we did some of the P O C D outreach, um, some of which was, I think, a response to, uh, you know, there was more modest sized housing by the beach and after Sandy, all of those sixteen to eighteen hundred square foot homes were torn down and replaced by thirty six hundred square foot homes. So, you know, are we in fact perpetuating a higher affordability issue because are we're allowing too much lower area or lot coverage? Like, do we need to kind of think about areas where we want things to be more modestly sized? And understanding that we may want to distribute that more broadly throughout the community instead of just in specific pockets of town. Um, where that can be a more natural market driven um, more modest sized house construction. Because, you know, I think the land's worth what you can build, right? And so if we have a lot of zoning that where we see applications where people are really maxing out the lot coverage, the floor area, are we in fact in our regulations allowing too much? Do we need to kind of thoughtfully scale back in some areas of town where we can let the market build things that are more modest and therefore more affordable? And fill some of those housing transition goals where seniors need to move out of a thirty six hundred square foot home into something that's fourteen hundred square feet. Or, you know, that serves as a starter home for that person who might move to a larger home. Like, so we're really kind of filling that housing cycle need. But if we predominantly have houses that are thirty six hundred square feet in size and larger, that might be some of the, some of the issue. And I just wanted to pose that to our commissioners in terms of, you know, do they sense a similar issue in terms of what they're seeing with new construction? Um, because to me, that's where we would have to revise our regulations specifically to address that. And again, I'm responding to some of the outreach comments where people said, oh, the beach neighborhoods have changed tremendously. They're not, you know, they've just become this, these mini mansion neighborhoods instead of what was neighborhoods kind of more for everybody. Um, so I'm just posing that out there. Thanks.
Go ahead, Christian Levy.
I'd like to address, uh, Emily's point, which I think is very good, particularly in my neighborhood. Uh, I live on Roland Road. And around the corner from me, when I first moved in, there was Fox Street with, uh, uh, basically, uh, which was primarily two family homes. And from my house down to the beach, it was primarily the lally cottages. And what you see, you know, I used to joke that, uh, I'd get my clients divorced and then they'd move around the corner to me onto Fox Street, which did happen a few times. Um, so, uh, but those op- options aren't there anymore. I mean, Fox Street is now getting totally redeveloped with the, uh, three to four thousand square foot homes. Uh, there's maybe five out of, uh, what was probably, you know, fifty or sixty lally cottages, uh, left and it's, uh, nothing but, you know, forty foot tall, three to four thousand square foot, uh, houses, uh, you know, from Quincy down to the beach. And I think, uh, you know, eh, if we, uh, were to promote, um, and not necessarily minimizing the lot coverage, but making the lot coverage expansive for multifamily or something. I mean, what's going on on Old Field Road right now? Where you've got more lot coverage, uh, but you're getting multifamily, uh, you know, two family homes and uh, which are much more affordable than a single four thousand square foot home. So I think, you know, right in this neighborhood, you see the impact of, you know, the relaxation of lot coverage and height and the impact it has on the availability of affordable homes. Thanks.
Uh, other reactions?
I have a question, um, related to climate change and ocean level rising. Is there a concern that we need more expertise on where the water's going to go and when it's going to come? And should we be putting a lot of density between the post road and the sound? And also for the same reason, our our sewer infrastructure, can that really be done without having a lot of expertise on what's going to happen over the next thirty or forty years?
And you know, I can take a stab at the sea level rise information. I mean.
I was hoping you would do that.
Yeah. Um, you know, UConn, um, through its, um, Connecticut Institute for Resiliency and Climate Adaptation, uh, is kind of a multi, um, State Department, it's, it's kind of an intergovernmental academic, uh, partnership where they look very specifically, and it's actually built into state statutes. So when we, when we are doing our plan of conservation and development, we are required to look at sea level rise and resiliency. Um, I think that in some circumstances, that has led Jim and I to have internal conversations about some of our, uh, unfortunately, our C zone areas that are in the Rooster River floodway that we don't think should be targeted for multifamily. But that's also led us to kind of internally ask ourselves where are there areas that we can replace some of that as of right, one to four family development? Um, you know, are, and so, you know, if you look at our zoning regulations presently, um, those little pocket neighborhoods are a holdover from when there was a lot of workforce housing that fed into the Bridgeport factories. Um, you know, right, kind of at the easterly edge of of Fairfield. So there's kind of historic precedent for why those little kind of as of right, multi-unit neighborhoods were there. Um, but they do kind of serve, you know, a need in diversifying our housing stock. But I agree with you, Kathy, that some of these places are in highly hazardous areas that we maybe need to reconsider um, in terms of density because, you know, a lot of folks who rent, they may not have the extra revenue to get out of harm's way when the time comes. And that concerns me as a planner, as a floodplain manager. Um, but, you know, we, we do have to look at how sea level rise will impact us. Uh, you know, I think that the understanding is for all the new homes that are being built, those homes will be safe, but at some point our town will need to figure out how we provide dry access. Um, you know, if those places become inundated. Uh, engineering is working through a few solutions as well in terms of writing grants for pumps that'll help dry out those areas quicker than, for example, what we saw with Sandy. Um, so, you know, there's, there's, we're definitely looking at it from a multiple, um, a, a multiple different perspectives in terms of what is prudent um, and both how to recover and be resilient from, you know, future sea level rise and, you know, more intense storm conditions.
Is, is there a training that we're supposed to have for? Because the zoning commission does coastal site plan review, but we've never had training in that. Is there a reason why zoning approves those versus conservation, for example?
Conservation doesn't have jurisdiction over title areas. So based on the state statute, that's com- that's, um, jurisdiction that's given to plan and zoning commissions. And generally, you know, I have to say that over time, yes, plan and zoning commissions, they do have access to training. Um, you know, through Circa, through UConn, through, um, you know, the, uh, UConn Extension Program, they provide training and in a variety of different things. Um, I think Jim and I can look and see whether there's upcoming training that we can forward to you if uh, in that topic. And I, and I do believe that, you know, with the new requirement within the state statute, all of these usual, um, training providers are kind of coming together and saying, you know, let's, let's, uh, you know, be more specific about what's being offered and then be able to kind of push that information out to commissioners to get the training that they need.
I know.
Don't you worry, you're going to get solicitations through the roof for all kinds of paid training to fulfill your statutory.
Requirement, yeah.
Requirements.
Yeah. I know, uh, Mr. Graffol was looking to make a. I know, uh, Mr. Rathwell was looking to make a comment. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, uh, just, uh, on, on the sea level rise and the flood zone. Um, if we had a single family house in a location where it might, we think we could do a two family house affordable. Um, I don't believe we can use federal funds for that or state funds for that. I'm not sure we could use any community development funds for that. Because there, there's a push not to allow greater density in the flood zone areas. Mark is dealing with that now on his Navy housing redevelopment and it's a real complication.
It is, but it has, it has been addressed in other, other jurisdictions. So where there's a will, there's a way. So, um, you know, generally I think there are, there is a, there are competing public policy goals. One is you don't necessarily want to intensify use within a flood zone. And the second is that, you know, we have a need for affordable housing and, you know, the, the areas that we have already set aside for that, they don't grow on trees. So it's hard to replicate a six acre site that's, uh, allowed for affordable housing elsewhere in town, as was suggested to me by someone helpful up at Department Housing. Uh, that just doesn't exist. Uh, so, you know, uh, I think if we had our druthers, we've created someplace else, but, you know, we have this opportunity to do so. I think Carrie, did you have a comment you wanted to make about lot coverage as well?
I made it independent.
Oh, you can say it out loud. So how's that?
You want me to go back to what I told you guys a couple of days ago? This kind of covers it, which is that there's a lot of issues going on here. Let's say you, you know, let's say, I mean, I love Emily's suggestions about reducing setbacks possibly coverage, but then, you know, a lot, a developer is not going to want to pay the same amount for that. That he would be paying for something where he could build thirty five hundred square feet. So then you're going to have objections from owners, whereas if you could make it look good and in the same area that a single family house might be in, you could have two or three families. I've, I've, a house and I've seen it done where it basically looks from the street or to people passing by like a big single family house. But it might have more families than that. It might have one apartment, one small house, you know, one studio apartment. There's all kinds of ways of doing that so that the owner can realize what he hopes to. And we can get the number of units that we perhaps need. And then these would be missing middle houses. Um, possibly by, uh, managed by individual owners or possibly by small, you know, I don't know, small companies, not silo. But anyway, it was one thought that I had where trying to make both work at the same time.
I'm not sure that F A R, I, Emily, I'm fascinated by your comment. Uh, I did some work for the town of Madison where they rezoned their entire shoreline area um, to reflect the reality of what was on the ground. And they went through a, an exercise in terms of mapping F A R and looking at which housing sites were appropriate in scale and design and which ones were out of whack. And they've actually adopted an F A R coverage table, which is almost like an IRS tax table. Your lot is between this and this, this is your F A R and this is your, this is your floor area and this is your max coverage. And they got to the point where actually the second floor can't be larger than seventy percent of the first floor. Because that's the ratio that kind of looks good. So I'm not sure that that's an, uh, an sort of housing committee strategy. But I'm fascinated by ways that it could tie into some of our work because it could also be used in a way to promote housing affordability, which is, there could be an F A R cap, but if you provided affordable units or divide a house into two units, there, there might be a little, some additional flexibility with that. So that's just kind of throw that, that out there. But I, that might be more an, an issue for the, the planning and zoning commission rather than affordable housing. I'm not sure yet.
Yeah, those are the kinds of incentives that we built into the Commerce Drive overlay as well as, uh, some of the other regulation amendments that we, we've done where they get a little break in the, um, excuse me. Sneeze, the parking requirements or density. You know, they get a little bit more, more, uh, 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 dense, uh, um, um, density in exchange for some affordability and the like. Um, so, yeah, we're doing that.
How does the commission, Steve, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission feel? I mean, the thought had occurred within the Affordable Housing Committee that perhaps identifying some of the nodes in town, such as similar to those that are identified in nineteen, set this nineteen seventy nine plan or other nodes could, might provide the foundation for an overlay zone or something else that says, listen, in the, in the, in these areas around these nodes, we could incentivize the creation of missing middle housing or some different housing flavors or some affordable units. Um, and it might be allowed through a simpler process, but the introduction of a concept either in the P O C D or, or in the Affordable Housing Plan in terms of, I guess I'll just call it sort of a, a node-based overlay zone to promote housing choices and diversity. How, how does that sound? Uh, to the commission?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna open the mic here to other commissioners, um, if they'd like to, uh, respond to that. I, I can certainly do so, but I don't want to monopolize the, the, the conversation here.
To me, it would depend on how dense these areas already are. Because that plan is, you said seventy nine?
Yeah, and, and it was only just, just a concept of a place-based strategy.
Forty years old, you know, the town has grown so much in that time that i- it's a good idea to have development near the bus line, near, near the town centers. Walkable, it's, it's great. But you don't want to put too much density where it's already pretty well developed. There's, there's so little land except in the double A zone in this town.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mark or Steve?
I have a comment, um, oh.
Go ahead.
I worry about open space preservation. I would much prefer if we were going to do something like that to say, this doesn't apply if it's open space. I just think we need to consider open space as a natural resource in its own right and not make as of right development decisions just based on location. We're talking about as of right, meaning if you're in the node, you can get the density basically without us having much discretion. Is that what that sort of regulation would, would allow?
No, I, I, I don't think I would mean it quite that way. The thought might be that, um, there, there might be places in Fairfield which, uh, could be more supportive of housing diversity or housing intensity. It could fit in better. Um, so I, I'm not quite sure how it would necessarily pan out, but um, I think the first step was sort of revisiting with the Planning and Zoning Commission, the concept of place-based um, approaches. Would, would that work? And so.
So, um, I, I, I would see it more in the nature of a special exception uh, under which there would need to be, you know, and without creating undue traffic congestion, fits in harmony with the neighborhood, doesn't impact the neighbor, neighbor, uh, uh, property values and so on and so forth. Like there, there's a, it's sort of traditional considerations that we would have to, um, look at on, on any given application. But the concept of overlays in quote unquote nodes or neighborhoods or different areas of town is something that we have done with frequency and we are currently, right? So we currently have open, uh, consideration of amendments to our downtown district regulations to incentivize, um, mixed use, um, sort of tiered. Uh, um, uh, what are they? Balcony, uh, not balcony. What are, Emily, what's the word that we want to create the chandelier in effect?
Terraces? So it terraces back?
Terraces back and, you know, to create streetscape and, um, walkability and, 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 you know, all these different considerations. Uh, that, that, that is specific to, you know, uh, the downtown district. We've looked at, um, you know, T O Ds around, you know, uh, traffic nodes and public transit nodes and, and the like. Um, largely it's in the more densely populated areas, right? Uh, through the commercial corridors, adjacent to the commercial corridors. So I don't think that there is, um, that that concept is, is, uh, is foreign. I, I what I don't think we've looked at previously is creating such an overlay in a, in a zone, let's say that's, um, you know, uh, up near Fairfield Woods or, or, uh, you know, in Greenfield Hill where we've, um, you know, suggested this, um, more dense, uh, development could occur with the, so what we're calling this middle housing and the like. Um, you know, that's, I don't know, off the top of my head, I'm not thinking of anything that jumps out at me. Emily, yeah, go ahead.
I think in the village area in Greenfield Village, we, you know, there was an applicant who tried for one time, two times, the third time was, was the charm where they were able to actually get a couple of units in there and, but again, I mean, I think to your point, um, that was, it was only, I think, at the most, it was like two units on a second story and then they wanted to convert. Do you remember this application? Residential and then do the other one is a hundred percent office. And the neighborhood was really upset. And at the end of the day, I think it was only, was it three units total or four units total?
They, they amended the application and the, the, the challenge there was that the same owner on, it's a single lot, two buildings. They're separate buildings. And so in order to comply with the fifty percent rule, they wanted to count all of one building as commercial and all of the other building as residential. And, uh, that is what the neighbors objected to. But that, case in point, it's a, and it's a great, it's a great case in point. Um, because, you know, that is a little bit off the beaten track. It's in a residential neighborhood. It's in an area where you've got, you know, uh, one acre zoning. Um, and the neighbors were not really keen on having additional apartment built, apartments built, you know, in, in the area. Um, so I'm, I'm not sure how it would be, uh, received.
I'm just going to also make a suggestion too, that if we're, so if we're thinking about things that we can do proactively, whether it's location or alteration to our existing zoning regulations. Um, the challenge when you're doing something that's, that's such a small number of units, I know that we've seen a couple of these in downtown where they've added one or two units above a property that they've owned for a very long time. So there's no kind of ambient land cost or anything like that is if we're thinking about kind of allowing that one to four unit development or that one to two, you know, to more duplexes or things like that, that would kind of drive the smaller unit scenario. Um, I think that those, we have to kind of think about some of those as being a hundred percent residential. Because when you're building at that scale, y- you can't finance mixed use. Like it's, you know, it's just not, it, it's really challenging. So, you know, for a contractor to build a two to a four, it's, it's easy for them to do that if it's a hundred percent residential, but I think we've gotten very fortunate in our downtown where we have had some of these long-term property owners want to add a unit or two above. But that's not a likely scenario, I think, adjacent to some of these, if we're thinking about locating places um, in our village areas, uh, for lack of better terminology, I think we do have to kind of target a hundred percent residential because that's, it's not likely to get built otherwise, I think. Mark, I don't know if you want to speak to that.
Oh, I think you're right, but you know, obviously we need to be very location, you know, sensitive to the location there as well. Um, because there's areas where we do want, you know, that commercial presence on the first floor.
And I think, um, one of the things we should focus on is sort of education in our neighborhoods where we've had the most, uh, resistance is when multi-family or developments, whether it be eight thirty G or otherwise, come into residential neighborhoods, whether it be Chunt Street or, uh, six townhouses, uh, on the old Post Road and a rear lot or what's going on in Park Street. I mean, eight thirty G is such a blunt instrument. Um, it's, you know, so much better if we could have a less dense affordable housing or a multi-use, uh, yeah, throughout the town. Uh, and, you know, I've often thought, you know, as I'm sitting up there, um, yeah, you may be in opposition uh, to this limited proposal, but, uh, think what the alternative is if an eight thirty G comes in. Um, so I mean, part of it, I think, is, uh, developing, uh, community awareness and an acceptance that affordable housing belongs throughout the town.
Steve, anything from your end? Um, did you have any other observations or comments?
Uh, Steve Rothwall or Steve Levy?
Oh, Steve Rothwall, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. Um, so the last time when we did the Affordable Housing Plan update, uh, we, um, set eleven goals, uh, that we hope to achieve over the coming years. And, um, with the commission's help, we were able to achieve many of them. And we're going to need your help again to design goals this time through. So that it's just not an update to a plan that gets put on the shelf, but there are um, goals that we can all work on together to achieve, number one. Um, and just a couple of, um, other thoughts. Um, I like design standards. I think especially with affordable housing that, um, design has a great effect on people's reaction to the development. And, um, I know it's tricky, uh, but if we had design standards, uh, I think it would make it, we'd make it a better development, a better neighborhood to be better for the community. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, I like longer deed restrictions. Uh, and one last thought that, uh, probably nobody's going to like, but uh, I have a friend who's an architect who says he doesn't design buildings, he designs spaces. And oftentimes a taller structure gives you more space for open space, for green space. And so instead of a three-story, if you have a six-story, you can do more, uh, down below. Just a thought.
Yeah, when you, when you increase the height to six stories, they take it all at the bottom as well. No, it's good. So what, um, uh, I'm trying to be a little bit mindful of the time. What, 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 what is the, um, where do we want to be tonight? I mean, have we pretty much run the course of, uh, you know, the questions and reactions and, and, and discussion? Um, or are there other sort of key topics that you wanted to review? And were there any specific goals that you wanted to achieve here other than, I mean, I think you've gotten a lot of good feedback, but you know, is there anything specific?
It makes sense, Matt, as I think we have gotten good feedback. I think that we have, uh, had a very fruitful discussion tonight. Um, we've had months of fruitful discussions with the Affordable Housing Committee. I think sort of the new initiatives in this plan. Um, the town, as, as Steve Rathwell indicated, made great progress with the, uh, Housing Trust Fund and the generation of revenue to approach these issues. Um, we're kind of thinking that the next evolution, uh, for Fairfield, uh, in housing could be this concept of a, a place-based approach, which might be able to find ways to assimilate appropriately scaled designed housing in places in the community that strengthen that sense of place and other things. So it may not always be deed restricted, but it would always sort of enhance the community. Could it be different than what's there today? Yes, it could, but it would happen in a smaller scale approach than sort of a mega project. So it would perhaps be an opportunity to infill. So I think the concepts of location and design, I think we've gotten some feedback on here tonight. Um, and I think we'll talk about that in the committee in terms of, of moving forward. Uh, and then some of the other, uh, recommendations that we've been discussing as well. Um, I think probably in the next month or two, we'll be actually preparing a document um, as a draft to, uh, coalesce the things that we've been talking about, the things we've talked about here tonight, and then be in a position to share this back with the commission again. So that when you see words and pictures, you can look at it and give it some additional, uh, guidance moving forward. The plan doesn't need to be adopted. The plan doesn't need to be adopted until June one or by June one, so we still have time. For us to share ideas, refine concepts and move forward. Um, so I think, um, I feel we've gotten some good feedback here tonight. Anything else? Mark or Steve or other members of the Affordable Housing Committee?
Yeah, no, I would, I would agree with that. I, I think the, the discussion has been very productive. I, I agree with that, that assessment. Um, I didn't hear anything, uh, where there was strong pushback to some of the. Uh, concepts that were floated. Uh, so hopefully, you know, we'll continue, uh, our, our deliberations and, and refine these concepts a little further and, and then come back to you with some. Some more specific suggestions or recommendations that, uh, for your review. Does that sound addict, sound okay, uh, Mr. Grathwell?
Yes.
Yeah, no, that, that, that sounds good. I, I would also be mindful that, you know, we aren't, we're doing, um, uh. In the midst of, uh, the P O C D update, right? And, and, you know, so it, this should be. Infilled, right? And where appropriate, um, in that context as well.
I think we're very cognizant of that. I think, uh, Jim and Emmeline have been wonderful working with us and sharing ideas and I think. We want to find symmetry. I think the timing isn't going to be perfectly coordinated. But we certainly want the two documents to complement each other and we'll continue to work on that to make sure that we find, um, a, a, a way to make that happen.
I just want to express my thanks and gratitude to all of you, uh, for participating tonight. I know. Everyone has very busy, busy lives and I know the Planning and Zoning Commission has a lot on their plate at the moment, so I do appreciate. You guys taking time out of your, uh, busy schedules to spend some time discussing this important topic. So I appreciate.
Thank you very much, Mark. It looks like you are still in the office, so.
I am.
Uh, we appreciate your hard work as well and everyone on the Affordable Housing Committee. Uh, you know, so thanks and all the members of the commission for taking their time out, uh, this evening. So appreciate it.
I will, uh, ask if there's any other closing comments before we conclude tonight's meeting. So anyone else have anything they would like to add to the record before we conclude? Okay, well, thank you, thank you all. Appreciate it again. I think we're, uh, we're adjourned at, uh. About, uh, eight forty. So appreciate it again. Everyone have a great, uh, rest of your evening.
Thank you.